Okay, so can can we go ahead and do a roll call?
So it is 7:11 PM. Mendoza.
I think you were muted, Rekha.
Here.
Tanya Booty.
Here.
Lindsay Ryan.
Here.
Hilpern.
Here.
Kartha.
Here. Thank you all for joining us this evening. Apologize for being a bit delayed. We'll first go with the approval of the meeting agenda. I move that the Board of Education approve an amendment to separate a personnel item from the consent agenda for tonight's meeting.
Second.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Tanya Booty.
Yes.
Lindsay Ryan.
Yes.
Hilpern.
Yes.
Kartha.
Yes. We'll start off with a district update. Bill, did you want to share any updates?
Just a very quick update that we continue with the remote learning. And we're making some minor refinements on that as we go along based on feedback from both our educators and our parents with that as well. The second thing we're also doing is looking at what our summer learning may look like as well. And then thirdly, what the learning might look like as part of our transition plan of coming back to school at some time yet to be specified. So we're working on that. We appreciate the continued support of the board as we move forward in precedent at times.
Thank you. And I just wanted to make a quick statement. We do have later on in the agenda an exciting moment where we will be swearing in a new board member, very much looking forward to that. But I did want to take a moment to honor the board member that she is replacing. We intended to take some time during our March board meeting to honor and to allow our community to honor Candace Chow for her seven years of service to the board and to District 65. But that plan was obviously disrupted given the closure of schools and our move to virtual meetings. I believe that there's still an intention to create something that we can put on our website to honor Candace and her service. But I did want to take just a minute to thank Candace for her long service and commitment to our district. In her seven years, in addition to serving in roles as board president and finance chair, she helped lead the board through a strategic planning process, through an operating referendum, through contract negotiations. Her contributions to the board and to the district were considerable. All of us on the board understand the time commitment and dedication required to be a productive board member. And Candace certainly gave generously of her time and talents serving the community on the school board. I have no doubt that it was a difficult decision for her to resign her seat early. And I have no doubt that she will continue to find other ways to serve the community that she so clearly loves. So I can all just kind of take a moment to thank Candace and wish her well on her future endeavors. Were there any other board comments? Okay, with that, then we will move on to public comments. In response to the governor's order allowing for virtual public meeting, members of the public wishing to provide a comment to be read at tonight's board meeting were asked to email the board secretary by 4:00 PM on Monday, April 27, 2020. And I believe that we do have one public comment, Adila?
Yes, we have one public comment that I will read on behalf of Meg Crewley, the president of the District 65 Educators Council representing over 750 educators. She identifies as cisgender white female and her pronouns are she, her, and hers. I'll begin reading her statement. During the time of the pandemic, there has been increased stress, anxiety, and uncertainty for educators, students, and families. Our educators have gone all into have gone all in to continue to support the welfare of our students and families, even during the act of God days when it was not mandated. They have been working harder than ever before, adjusting to this new way of instruction, supporting students and families along with supporting their own families. I am here on behalf of our over 750 educators to talk to you about the importance and need for collaboration with your own employees. To be honest, the situation right now is very chaotic and is 100% of the administrator's making. We have a new superintendent coming to District 65, and it is in everyone's interest for him to be successful. So the failure of the current administration to collaborate with our educators makes absolutely no sense. Supporting our educators has a direct link to children and families. Furthermore, the potential impact and harm on our teaching communities also has a direct impact on children and families. It sounds ridiculous that DEC would have to come directly to the school board about this, but unfortunately, that is where we find ourselves. One example is the recent mandate to reorganize the structure of all of the coaching positions. DEC was told with no prior input about this decision one week ago today. The current coaches were told last Tuesday. I need to make this clear again, that both DEC and the coaches were told after the fact. It is almost as if someone came up with a scheme and then simply spraying it upon us at the last minute. No discussion, no educator input, no educator feedback. And if anyone tells you that there was, they are not being honest with you. Our educators are working really hard right now to support students and families in the middle of a pandemic. And the lack of respect that is being shown to them by the district leadership is incredibly disappointing. The email that was sent out Friday evening that stated, "Exciting news" was a slap in the face of our coaches and certainly not exciting news for them. Furthermore, to have been told of one hiring process when they were informed and then to have a different hiring process shared in an email just adds to the insult. There is also apparently a plan to move forward with pilots and curriculum changes that were previously approved by different educators and committees. However, this is deceptive because those same educators were not made aware of the pulling of the supports through coaching that they thought they would be getting. This lack of collaboration is an ongoing problem. It was greatly evident when the district leadership created their priorities last year without the union or educators being included in the process or creation of these priorities. We also were not included in creating the professional learning plan supporting those priorities. We hear that the administration is working on the professional learning plan for the upcoming year, yet again without DEC's involvement. Additionally, we continue to struggle with even completing the implementation of contract language. The administration continually uses the phrase "lack of shared understanding" around travel for educators, pupil contact minutes for educator groups, number of classes for educators to teach, substitute pay for emergency coverage, and specific criteria for educator assignments. We are confused by the lack of partnership as we have been working collaboratively on the remote learning plan. We recognize that this is a requirement and wonder if the administration would have collaborated in its creation if it had not been mandated by the state of Illinois. DEC has shown a repeated willingness to collaborate with the district leadership. We participate in the monthly joint leadership meeting, but to tell you the truth, they are going nowhere. In a time where the district leadership and administration use messages of having grace, flexibility, and care for our students and families, educators are not being given that same consideration. The district leadership are undermining the morale of the staff and not engaging in best practice. Actions are not matching the messaging to DEC, to the staff, and to the community. You are the school board, and you need to understand from our perspective, the district leadership is failing at collaborating and partnering with the various educators who are in our classrooms, virtual and physical, and are working directly with our families and students every day. We know that it was the school board's intent for there to be greater collaboration and not less. That is why we are appealing to you to take control of the situation and urge the administration to move forward in a collaborative manner. Our stakeholders deserve to be truly valued and included in the decision-making process for our future. DEC is attaching letters and feedback from educators that we have been asked to share. These have been forwarded to the board as well.
Thank you, Meg, for sharing that statement. We will definitely we've received a number of emails that we have reviewed. We will review further attachments to that for sure. And while we can't discuss it tonight, it wasn't on the agenda, I think we can make sure that perhaps when we're talking about a we have a in a future meeting, we're going to be talking about update on the priorities and perhaps we can discuss how the coaching model fits in with those priorities at that point and address some of these concerns then. And I take it that was the only public comment?
Yes, that was the only public.
Okay. We will then move on to our proposed action items. I'll take this motion again. I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendations outlined in the attached group motion and approve the personnel leaves and separations, March 2020 Board of Education meeting minutes, destruction of February 2018 closed session audio recordings, February 2020 list of bills, treasurer's report, and budget amendments.
Second.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Tanya Booty.
Yes.
Lindsay Ryan.
Yes.
Hilpern.
Yes.
Kartha.
Yes. Moving on with our personnel action items, we have three. I move that the Board of Education adopt the resolution authorizing the notice to remedy regarding the first licensed employee discussed this evening during the board's closed session meeting that was subject to a notice to remedy recommendation.
Second.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Tanya Booty.
Yes.
Lindsay Ryan.
Yes.
Hilpern.
Yes.
Kartha.
Yes. And then I move that the Board of Education adopt the resolution authorizing the notice to remedy regarding the second licensed employee discussed this evening during the board's closed session meeting that was subject to a notice of remedy recommendation, notice to remedy recommendation.
Second.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Tanya Booty.
Yes.
Lindsay Ryan.
Yes.
Hilpern.
Yes.
Kartha.
Yes. And then finally, I move that the second licensed employee discussed in the board's previous closed session meeting that was subject to a notice to remedy recommendation be suspended without pay for a period of 10 days to be effective as soon as reasonably practical as determined by the administration.
Second.
Second.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Tanya Booty.
Yes.
Lindsay Ryan.
Yes.
Hilpern.
Yes.
Kartha.
Yes. And then Bill, you have the next motion?
Yep. I move that the Board of Education enter into closed session at 5:00 PM, Monday, May 4, 2020, to be held virtually for the purpose of discussing appointment, employment, compensation, and performance of specific employees, negotiations, matters relating to individual students, and litigation.
Second.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Tanya Booty.
Yes.
Lindsay Ryan.
Yes.
Hilpern.
Yes.
Kartha.
Yes. And then our next two action items are related to the Head Start grant application program governance bylaws. I don't know, is Katrina joining us for this meeting?
Let me see.
She was scheduled to be on. Do you see her, Adila?
No, I do not. Let me check if she's messaged. I believe she's not able to join.
Okay, I'll take it from this point. We have two items tonight. The first one is the approval of the Head Start grant application. And that's the baseline for that. We need to have it approved by the board so we can move forward with our application to present at that time.
I'm just looking for, I know Katrina had sent something to us, so I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find it in my email. My apologies. If anybody has any questions in the meantime, please. Questions or comments?
I would just say that these grant applications, they're a lot of work. A lot of time goes into thinking about how the subset within our organization is organized, funded, what it's funding and how it works. And it was a lot of reading and it's grant reading. But thank you to everybody who contributed to the work. It's, you know, it can be really dry at certain points to read, but when you think about the output and who this grant serves, it's a really big deal. And we appreciate you a whole team putting in the effort to try to maximize the grant resources.
Right. Katrina did send some, just some really brief notes about the packet and stating that regarding the community assessment, it was just an FYI, so no board action is requested at this time. The program governance bylaws, which include parents have reviewed and approved earlier this year. So no changes or updates are being requested at this time. And for the Head Start grant application, that is the baseline, and they're making the request for the same program options. Those are the notes that Katrina sent to us that are included in the changes or in the packet as we have it.
And I think one other comment that she had is that transitioning the Head Start half-day double session into a full working or school day session was discussed early in the process. However, based on many varying factors, this option was not requested for that school year 2021. These options may be revisited in the future. So yes, I agree, these are definitely, it was a large application, and I know that this is a lot of work. Katrina puts a tremendous amount of effort into it, as does the whole team at JEH. So it is with extreme gratitude. I know that one of the questions I was going to have is really more of a comment. I don't know that, I'm sure there's not an answer, is that obviously with all of the uncertainty around we know the school is not going to reopen this year. We are hoping that we will be able to reopen in the fall, but what the next academic year looks like is, I think, very much still up in the air. And so at some point, I would imagine that we will come back and hear how when we have more clarity on what the next academic year is going to look like, how specifically that will affect JEH, or something that I hope we can discuss. And I also just wanted to further note that we will remain working with Infant Welfare Society as a delegate agency for early Head Start. And I know there have been some comments earlier in the year regarding per student rate that was given to Infant Welfare Society. And I just want to thank Katrina and other members of the administration who worked with Infant Welfare Society to hear their concerns and to work with them. Even though, you know, to work with them to resolve this. So I just appreciate that and saw that that was also the delegate agency contract is also a part of what we received. So without any other questions or comments, Rebecca?
I wanted to make a comment.
Go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on the tremendous asset that we have in having early childhood programs that are under our purview. It gives us research indicates that the the best and most effective way to address gaps in opportunity is by providing opportunities in early childhood. And the fact that we have zero to five programs that are under our umbrella gives us an incredible asset and gift for our work and our priorities. And I'm in, I'm always impressed by the level of intentionality and work that we see in the Head Start materials that come before us. And so I'm very appreciative to the team and very appreciative that we have the resources to make these commitments to our community.
Agreed. Thank you very much. Okay. With that, Rebecca, can you please make the motion?
Yeah, so it is with gratitude with all of the work that's been put into preparing this Head Start grant application that I move that the Board of Education approve the Head Start grant application, which is the baseline, and the attachments as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Tanya Booty.
Yes.
Lindsay Ryan.
Yes.
Hilpern.
Yes.
Kartha.
Yes. And then Rebecca, you also have the motion about the bylaws?
Yes, I move that the Board of Education approve the Head Start program governance bylaws as presented.
Second.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Tanya Booty.
Yes.
Lindsay Ryan.
Yes.
Hilpern.
Yes.
Kartha.
Yes. And it is now with great pleasure that we move us on to our next item, which is the seating of our new board member, Sula Kim, who has just joined us. Welcome, Sula.
Welcome. Thank you.
Excellent, yes. So do we want to go ahead and, I'm sorry, I'm looking for my I just sorry, I'm a little bit off script here, but I did want to just again thank the many community members. I want to again thank Ms. Chow for all of her years of service in the district. I want to thank the many community members who applied for this position. And I want to especially, you know, thank Sula for applying. We are very excited to have her join us. I do want to just note that we are not technically, normally we would vote on appointing a new board member, but given that our timeline had to be adjusted due to school closures and COVID-19 and going virtual, that technically the regional office of education has made the appointment for us, and we will not be taking a vote on this tonight. When we notified Kevin Josh, the regional superintendent of schools, about the delay and why he commended the board's efforts to limit public meetings and prioritize the health of its community. And by letter dated April 3, 2020, he agreed to use the authority granted to him by the Illinois School Code to affirm the board's selection and appoint Ms. Kim to fill the board vacancy. So just a little bit about Sula. Sula Kim has over 20 years of teaching and administrative experience in higher education. As Assistant Dean of Graduate Programs in the School of Professional Studies at Northwestern University, Sula oversees professional master's degree programs and certificate programs across a range of disciplines. Before joining Northwestern in 2016, she was director of the Center for Innovation and Teaching Excellence at Columbia College, Chicago, responsible for faculty development programs focused on more effective approaches to teaching, learning, and curriculum design. She has also worked in the writing programs at Princeton and Harvard and began her career as an educator at the University of California, Irvine, where she earned a PhD in English. In all of her roles, she has focused on nurturing strong faculty-student relationships that are the heart of effective teaching and transformative learning. Sula and her husband have a sixth grader at Nichols and a second grader at Lincoln. She is a founding member of the Lincoln Equity Committee and is on the planning committee of the Next Steps Education and Advocacy Series on Race, Equity, and Education. Born in Seoul, South Korea, Sula immigrated to New York with her family when she was six years old and grew up in Queens and Long Island, where she attended public schools serving diverse communities. She has made Evanston her home for nearly 13 years. We are incredibly excited to have Sula join us on the board. And so, you know, a little round of applause. I am sad that we can't do this in a in an actual gathered way, that we have to settle for a virtual, but we are definitely pleased to have you join us. I don't do, I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you want to say anything, please feel free.
Thank you. I just want to thank everybody on the board and you know, I'm humbled and excited to serve with you all and I'm glad to join, be part of a community that cares so much about public education. And yeah, I'm excited and I look forward to working with you all and working with all the teachers and staff and parents and families in District 65. Thanks very much.
Excellent. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Did anybody else have anything to add?
It's welcome.
Thanks.
Yes. I believe you have the oath of office or, Adila, how do you want to just have Sula read it or? Yeah, you're on mute, Adila.
Yes, I think Sula has a copy and she, I think it's fine that she just reused it.
Okay, so if you want to just go ahead and raise a hand or anything or or I can just read here. Okay. I, Sula Kim, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education of Evanston Skokie School District 65 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability. I further swear that I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting. And I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
All right, excellent. Thank you. You are officially one of us now, so congratulations. Congratulations.
Welcome.
Yes, welcome. It'll be nice to see your square on the screen and someday soon, hopefully, to actually have you joining us at the table on the board. Okay, well, with that, we don't have any other formal discussion items. One of the FYI items that you'll see is a memo regarding the draft school calendar for the not the upcoming school year, but for the following school year, for the 21-22 school year. Normally, at this point of the year, we would take a look at that and approve a draft calendar. When it was initially brought to us to consider for the agenda, it was apparent that there were some real questions about, you know, some of the holidays that are being taken off or that are currently not attendance days and whether it was worth considering putting them back on as attendance days, particularly given the number of interrupted instructional weeks that there are. So the determination was made, it's been several years, I think five or six years since a survey was done about the school calendar. And especially now that we're starting to move further and further apart with the high school on start and end dates, it seemed to be the appropriate time to get some community input again on the school calendar. So there are going to be some questions put on about some of the holidays that are being taken off, some of the religious holidays, Veterans Day, some of Presidents' Day, some of those types of things. I guess, I don't know that there's a ton of us for us to discuss, except that if board members wanted to chime in with some things in particular that they that they feel need to be included in the survey, I think now would be the time to, to do that. So does anybody have any thoughts? And I know in the past, when we did the survey, that it was sent out to parents and also to staff, and we were able to see the, the, you know, kind of the results based on the stakeholder group. So I would assume that it's going to be in a similar fashion then. And I believe in the memo, it says that we will see in June that they, is it that right? Is it June that it'll be brought back to us?
Correct.
For, to approve the draft. So, and at that point, we'll see the survey results as well.
And is this a, is this a survey that's going out to not just community members or stakeholders like parents, but also to staff members as well?
It is definitely going to staff members as well, yes.
It also will include, in addition to what you just mentioned, Sunny, spring break as far as the timing of that? And do we come up with maybe something that's more predictable every year is another question that'll be on there.
Right. Right. Okay. So, anything else?
Well, I just, I would like to say, I'm sure that some parents would have questions in regards to, or just Phil or Heidi, if you can make a statement in regards to the, the uncertainty that we have around start time in, in the fall and how, how that would be managed. I think people would want to know maybe how that could potentially impact a start of school and just what precautions we're taking. And, you know, if you could just explain who, who we get our directive from and how we, we figure out some of those decisions for people who probably will ask how the, the novelty of the situation is going to impact that calendar.
Glad to do that with Heidi's assistance on this. First of all, we look at the guidance from the CDC, also the guidance from the state and local health departments, which is critical for that as well. We're looking at the scenarios, what they could be as far as, upon what the situation will come up and their advice that we receive will be to have our remote learning continuing in the fall. That's one possibility, one scenario we're planning. A second one would be that we would have some type of a plan set up where we would have a total school where everyone would go back to school. We don't think, though, it's going to be the old normal. It will be a near, a new normal with that. And a third option would be if we have to put in place another of health and safety issues, such as social distancing, such as looking at also protective devices as masks. Then we'll have to look at something of that nature, which could involve a combination of having a virtual learning part of the time and maybe some in-person as well so we keep our social distancing. So those are the three scenarios we're looking at. Obviously, our top priority is the health and safety of our students and our staff, but also the very important part of it, and that is to continue the learning with that. Heidi, would you like to add to that?
No, I think you've covered it completely. Thank you. We're at the initial stages.
And there will be communication coming out as soon as we have more information and plans on both that and then also for the summer period of time as well for learning.
Is there a day by when we will determine whether or not we'll offer summer programming? If any, whether remote or at, at a location?
We're in the process of looking at that right now to see, it's really two different dimensions with that. One dimension would be our programs that we have in the summer that are for academics, and we're looking at those. The other one would be for those programs where different organizations would, would use our facilities. So we're looking at that very closely and we'll be communicating again with our health officials to see what and what might not be feasible. There will be communication coming out very soon on that as soon as we have more information. I would say in the next, when you say, Heidi, the next week or two, we'll have that ready to go.
Yes, and you know, our commitment is to ensure that children can continue to learn during the summer. It's really, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of how. So those are the pieces that we're taking a look at right now. And we'll have information for the board soon, as well as the community.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. I know that this has been a tremendous lift to try to, to work out all of these types of things with, with so much uncertainty in the air. So thank you very, very much for all the work that you're doing. And I know that as soon as you have something concrete, you will be sharing that with us and with the community. So thank you so much. Any, anything else? Okay, then, with no further business before the board, I move, I adjourned this board meeting at 7:46 PM. Thank you, everybody.
Welcome, Sula.
And welcome, Sula.
Welcome, Sula.
Next week.